Any public discussion on any items next agenda. We have a tale in the minutes.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Payroll warrant. And they're done, they're down. I know we've got payroll warrant.
Uh, so you...
All in favor?
Aye. I make the motion to raise the wages. For the commission.
I'll check in third and fourth.
Hey, uh...
Yeah, no. That's kinda like David Hamm will ask me the other day, said, "If I pick you up, will you go with me?" "Sure, what do you need me to do?" "Where are we going?" He said, "I don't care where we're going, we're just gonna get the hell out of here."
We're leaving town.
"Your boy, pick me up."
Leaving town. That's it. Is this twenty-eighth?
Mm-hmm.
All done. Never looked my watch or watch to, and I can't see that one up there.
Jay just got the phone call a little ago, they're releasing my brother tomorrow.
Good. I was gonna ask you about that this morning, like, I did.
Stay in the city for three weeks, but they have like a, the transplant has like a little apartment that has a shuttle that goes, that will take him, I mean, to them from the doctors and Walmart or whatever they need to go and so. My niece called and she said, "I need your help tomorrow." I'm like, "Oh, dear heavens, what now?" She said, "We have to just move this apartment for his mom and dad, because when he gets out, then he'll be able to drive." So he can't drive for two weeks.
Kidney transplant, did you with them that day?
No, we were, we had postponed it until July, till the wedding and end of fiscal year and everything. And he was, we got called two weeks ago and got admitted to the hospital, not all the way in there, and there was a blood clot in the kidney, and so they couldn't use it. This one, my sister-in-law somehow found out that it was a thirty-nine-year-old female that had been killed in a car wreck. And the guy right across the hall dropped the other kidney.
Uh, it's a major, man, right now.
Saved seven lives.
Really? I can't remember right now.
So that's where his kidney came from?
Wow.
Well, that just works out.
Okay, well, I'll check with you when I get out of the meeting.
He's done tremendously.
Okay, bye.
Yeah, is that...
It's so sad and so happy all at the same time.
Yeah, yeah, that's what, that's...
Crazy emotion.
Yeah, that's, that is the horrible thing, is that family know what they went through, but, you know, the...
Wow.
The lives that she saved. Um, or an donor.
Pretty awesome.
Yep. But he's done very, very well. He's, he had a rough, they put, his surgery was late, late, late Wednesday night. Um, Thursday and Friday were extremely rough for him. Um, Saturday, we were starting to see a little bit of sunshine. Um, Sunday, it was just like, I mean, he was just... He was, yeah, he was up and down the halls, he couldn't combine, he was just, he was happy. He was okay.
That is wonderful.
That's, that's all.
So, but...
That's so cute.
Took the catheter out this morning, and that's what my sister-in-law says, we haven't been able to keep him in bed since, so.
Well, new release on life.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He'll still have lots of life changes that he'll have to go through in his days too, but... And the main one is, he has five grandbabies.
Twenty-seven took this time? Thirty-two for that.
Five grandbabies that, I mean, for the next six months, you'll have to wear a mask if anybody's around him, just, you know, those symbols that we don't know that they have. And so if you need this system, you'll have to just, you'll have to wear a mask around them at all times.
And it's five for one.
That's kinda been hard for them to understand why they can't go see Papa right now and everything. They had, um, one of his sons hasn't been able to see him since he went into surgery, because they just got back from Jamaica and they knew they're not out of the country, he cannot see them for a month. So he hasn't got to see his dad, but his two boys haven't had to see their father. Husband and daughter-in-law.
I'm gonna buy him here, I'm high.
Ooh, wow.
Glad it's out there. And nothing here. Sixteen.
We'd borrow this room.
It worked.
Did you look at the trailer?
No, gee, they're supposed to have a demonstration.
They called me, but I don't think they could have it.
Yeah, I'm sure they didn't, 'cause she was gonna call me and ask to tell me how to get there, and then it started pouring down rain. I haven't talked to her since.
I wanna see that.
I saw a video of it, but now...
Video, it looks good.
Video, that's good.
We might be able to talk for over eight miles.
Yeah, that fire there tied over. We're gonna do that later.
Supposed to storm again tonight?
Supposed to. It's afternoon.
It's afternoon, huh?
I did call a dealer on my phone. I said, "We here, we're..."
You don't have any weather for some law?
Yeah, we need a little rain.
Yeah, we don't have enough.
Lot of clouds in this one. We can't even get serious about that anymore. I'm gonna start dreaming this morning. Having dreams about it. I bought a boat, and I had thought it was intentional to take it to the lake, but the lake ain't down to me. I don't know if I'll come. I shouldn't have thought of speaking, but I should have bought a airboat. Me and you guys picking up everybody.
Looks like it's gonna be from three to midnight, when then on its track. Time frame, doesn't look like an enhanced rest of tornado, more slight and, and then more severe storms and tornadoes. Kinda like Sunday, I guess.
My daughter.
There's always the possibility.
When that's what?
Her bachelorette party was...
Yeah, he's been messing along.
Of course he did.
Which day, Saturday?
Mm-hmm, yeah. And she has dogs.
I can see years, I know that's too much.
Mom, I need somebody to take care of the dog, and I'm like, "Well, I cannot stay at the bachelorette party and sober you guys around and be home with the dog." Well, thank goodness my other daughter's pregnant, so she become the designated driver. So I came home, and I did not quite get home in time, and I was hurrying, stopped by a sheriff. All mine. And he's like going, "Why are you hurrying?" I'm like, "It's my mom, listen to the road." And I do not like storms, I don't like to drive in storms, I don't like to be in the house in storms, I do not like storms. And he's like, "No, I can just change it for thirty minutes." "Well, honey, you're not getting in my pickup, and you're getting wet, so if that's what you wanna do, then get after it, you're not getting in the pickup with me." So he finally let me go, and I hit it about three miles from the Taco Bell exit. Could not, anything. There was, thank goodness, a vehicle in front of me, and I just...
So you don't wanna be a storm chaser?
No.
Just wanted to make sure to clarify that.
Not a dead question.
Oh, yeah, that's one I can. And, yeah. So, anyway, I did get home, I did, I called mom, and mom took care of the dog, and that's what I should have just done in the first place, and just stayed where I was at. But they were at a restaurant, and they started taking them into the basement, because the storms were going over. The time they got them all lined up, ready to go down to the basement, and someone said, "Oh, nope, it's over," so they hopped into the wheel. Like, I was freaked out, and I was like, "Yeah, mom, it's probably a good thing you wasn't here." Uh, well, goodness.
What, what's the deal?
Um, that's the, oh, just, you put it on for a large amount, and then however you use, and this is just how much you didn't use of that liquid, so, yeah, it's just, it's just showing that you didn't use all of that liquid. Or to be, I report to be, um, close out. I just don't use all of that, um, that's just another, another check and balance.
What it tells you is a little bit, right?
It's a large amount, yeah. Another check and balance, if we can check that it doesn't amount.
That's not used, you're staying with it.
Yeah, just goes right back to your account.
We'll have to find the one we're looking for there.
Yep.
I'll second it.
I'll move it. All in favor?
Aye. We just do things upside down, if I'm dys... I'm dyslexic.
Marvin Blanketbrook.
One, two, and three, Jake?
Mm-hmm.
Districts one, two, and three?
Yeah.
Oh, that's a good one. I'll just sign somebody.
I left it too.
So I'll sign here.
I'll sign it.
I'm going, okay, where are I? Shall we just sign them?
I'll pay to be here.
You get these back, Jake?
Yes.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Look at it, man.
Darn, you're getting more than that. Here's your bracelet.
You can peek in.
All right, I'll put a slip earlier, because I was just dying to...
There are two on that one. On that one.
Thank you, ma'am. Don't sign those, Jake, those are the sheriffs, just like, "Oh, where'd you go?"
All right.
I move it, click the blanket second. All in favor? Aye. Broke caution, broke that.
Do you want to?
I am not a person.
Oh, without you?
Yeah. Get pick two, Marvin. Do I get thrown away?
Got time, let's go, dude. You guys got plenty, man.
Time, she really got notification, it's all again. Yeah.
Oh, strange.
Now we're getting into the good, we'll get to three.
Oh, yeah, that Marvin love.
He's hitting home run so far. He pulls a right leg and then flops him here.
They just moved the rig off the mill down on here. Who wants to come up to me with here? They're in the river, they should be out there on their own, they can't even get it, man.
They got a lot of water behind the frac there. They go, they don't have enough water. I'm moving it.
Yeah, true. Broke caution, Marvin, get it.
All set. All right. Bids for upgrading the mapping shift from three nine one one to next generation nine one one. Which county be submitting the bids, correcting the bid and opening bids for the three-county DA who are open by which county last week? The bids were not tabled, they took no action on it, Dr. Randy again this morning. And the reason being that there is gonna be, uh, grant money available in July, and the DA is gonna check for sure if we go ahead and accept them, whether we're still eligible for grant money, or we're gonna have to wait till after July one to accept them, so we're eligible for grant money, so. I'm gonna move, we take no action on it. I didn't, I didn't bring a copy of the bid.
I did, I got one here, I emailed them to you guys, so...
Yeah, I know.
If somebody needs one, I brought them, so...
Yeah, and Randy told me that there's quite a bit of difference in the two bids, and they've talked to the cheaper bid, and you're not wanna use them, they've already met some other...
Harbor County, yes, and they had problems.
They've had problems mapping, so the higher bid is a reputable company that you don't have trouble with, they can do it, so that gives the future down the road to remember that.
They'll table them.
Yeah, I move, we take no action on it.
Aye.
All right. That way we might be able to get some grant money to help pay for that, I hope. Emergency evacuation for a fire tornado, another emergency for the courthouse, fifty more.
Very good.
I understand, we should have had more of these in place, and we didn't. I don't know why we didn't do it first of the year, I don't know.
I saw mine from when my dad was here, so that's why I didn't twist it by my door.
Is that what you shared with me this morning?
I think that's the, kinda like the emergency operation plan, the big one from two thousand and four, the huge one. So what is it that you're talking about?
It's just to tell shit where to...
Hope for the door now.
The thing that's up on the wall, that's where to evacuate?
This isn't just a little one, just for my office. Um, I know Diane was working on individual little ones for each office, and I know she was working on district ones and stuff, but we probably need to have some tornado drills and some fire drills and some earthquake drills.
Something in place.
Something in place. And if, you know, if a, if a employee is, is confused and doesn't know where they need to go, then they can't help.
Well, absolutely, I thought we had the evacuation diagrams on where to go in case of a fire or anything like that.
I don't have a diagram at my office, I just have a little...
I thought there's one.
Yeah. They're new to my, I'm in each office, though.
Yeah.
And each district.
We need one of the barns, fair enough.
Do you guys go to the basement here for tornadoes?
Um, we don't anymore, we go to the church, um, but would it be, I don't know whether it's...
That's not a secure facility.
Yeah, I don't know whether it's secure anymore. At the time when Diane was working on it, they was working on the heat and air, and there was so much obstacles to build, so I'm just...
See, I was always under the impression that the courthouse was open as a public place for folks that did not have shelter. This place was supposed to be a place of refuge, so it would need to...
Here to go, man. That's a...
So, at what?
Yeah, that's a...
Yeah. Okay, and that changed?
Well...
So, no.
Yeah, see, I don't know either.
Nobody knows.
No one.
I think the only way it changed was by word of mouth, so...
I don't know that it's actually changed, because Nancy's not here to stay, but she told me about a story not too long ago, about a lady that came in here, and she, it's been maybe more than eight years ago, came in here because she didn't have a storm cellar, and her family dropped her off here. And she was an elderly woman, and Nancy had to stay with her until the storms were over, until she was able to get back to her home. So we probably need to, we probably need to get together and figure out what the best policies and procedures are gonna be for that and get everyone's input. If things, if perception has changed...
Yeah, then we need to put it in the paper.
You know, and then we can, you know, update that, 'cause, like, the city has given me some things that, that they have done for their storms, for their processes, for Cherokee. But whatever we wanna do, we need to figure out what those are as, as things have changed. Just the grade school, you know, I mean, that's more of a city of Cherokee type thing, but...
The grade school, quite a bit.
But more things that...
More information.
Yeah, absolutely.
Their, their basement in the grade school, if they use it.
But in, but focus more on what we wanna do for the courthouse, 'cause, you know, I was always like, when it's time to leave for your employees, it's up to the elected officials and the commissioners, you guys get together and figure out what's best. And that feel like we executed that great on the other day when we did that. Um, and then just communicating to the community around, if they wanna come here and use this place, well, we're gonna have to access that, if it'll be through the west door, the south door, whatever door that is, and just communicate that, write some procedures and stuff, which I'm all about doing, so. And then District Barnes, you guys will have to figure out what works best for you guys, Marvin and Stan and Jay, and...
Well, I got a question, so Jake, when you closed the courthouse, then what does that do for the county courts? Can they, do they go home with pay or go home with that?
We're still home with pay.
We're still home with pay.
If we close the courthouse, the courthouse employees go home with pay.
They go home with pay.
What about...
That's, that's never been rolled up, so that's...
What about...
Jay, did you say, did you say that the county employees had to be taken off if the courthouse employees let go a certain amount of hours? That the county hands had to compensate for that as well?
That's one of, one of the things that was brought up.
My, my guy can clock out and go home, but, but I mean, that's what...
If we put the courthouse closed, you did?
Well, not necessarily. We stayed and worked there, hey, we're going out to the club.
So did we, but if you have one individual, uh, we gotta have some, to me, we gotta have something in place.
Now, the other night, other day, I sent Ashley, I said, "You better get on home," 'cause she had to go to Kyle, and I sent some of the guys to like go, like, seven miles out to town or wherever, going there.
There's lots of times where the district guys, you guys do go home, and we stay here and work, because you guys can't function in work due to road issues and weather, where it's not so severe, we're still, so there's always, there's both sides of the spectrum on that, so I don't know what best would work for y'all.
I think that discretionary call by the commissioner and by the, of course, the courthouse.
But can you legally send them home with pay as well?
I'd, I'd never, I, I can't answer that.
I mean, yeah, if, if you're closing the facility, you can send them home with pay, because it's not that important. Fault, yeah, fault was the word, yeah, but no.
I guess you could send them home and, and with pay, and then you as a commissioner have to sign the time cards, or punch them, punch them out on the time card. But I've never experienced that, 'cause when they go home and they get fucked up.
Well, I mean, that's, yeah, that's, if you, if somebody's worried about their pay, I mean, I've read word about it a lot.
Yeah, yeah.
That's all, so I need to know if it's legal for us to send them home with pay?
You have to get court here's maturity now, that's, that's...
You think the courthouse ain't closed?
If you close your barn due to inclement weather, then, and that's what, I called Dale on mine, 'cause I had an employee that couldn't get to work because of the roads and stuff. I said, "What can I do?" And he said, well, he said to have them take a picture of the road, which they did, and I just attached it to the time sheet, and we just wrote "incentive weather" on there, and we paid it. So, I mean, if they feel like, I mean, your job as an elected official is to make them feel safe, for some reason, they are feeling like they are not safe, and you choose to send them home, I would write "incentive weather" on theirs, and, but you gotta, you gotta also let them know that they can abuse that, I mean, 'cause that's what we're gonna do next thing.
And I think requires commissioners, that, that's up to the commission's discretion, 'cause it might not be storming, and if, Marvin might have a tornado hit the ground down there.
So what we're doing on the barns, you guys, you guys will take care of the courthouse, it's, uh, it's up to each commissioner?
I would, I would so move if we have to, that it's up to the discretion of the commissioner as to...
Just for the elected official?
What the safety of their individual is or their employees are.
So just up to the elected official, then not necessarily the commissioner?
Oh, that would... Certain for...
And I will get with the fire department, Lanita and guys, and get some, get us getting some fire drills in here in the courthouse. I'm sure they'd be more than happy to do that, and it would be...
I don't know, they necessarily need to have the, the fire department come down, we just need to...
Well, no, but, I mean, they, well, I don't mean to come down to help us do that, but to help us maybe decide and maybe update where our evacuations are, maybe look at some things, maybe, 'cause it's probably been a while since that's taken place, kind of look at that, and maybe even talk about... Kind of look at that and maybe even talk about the, the earthquake type drills and whatnot and.
I know we did a couple earthquake drills with Diane. I know we did, uh, fire and tornado, because, uh, that was what we was trying to change the, because with all the construction at that time, we was trying to change the meeting place, because we used to meet in the park and in the alley. Well, we had all that construction and that was, made it not so safe for the employees. And so we started meeting by the little doughboy guy. So, yeah, we just need to have a central spot.
The doughboy guy?
Doughboy guy, yeah. No, I didn't say that, no. The actual statue.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I know when we do our fire prevention, which is the one we're supposed to do this past month, uh, and we're going to do next month, we are supposed to discuss some of those, the fire prevention and your evacuation payments, that is supposed to go over, some of that.
Resolution to execute agreement establishing the echo SIF and payment option for workman's comp renewal for nineteen and twenty, which is, which is standard renewal that we've got to do every year.
Do we want to pay, make it in one payment or do we want to make it in two payments? And then here's the resolution to set us.
I don't recall, what have we been?
We're always making one.
That's what I was thinking, but, but there is an option.
Yeah, yeah, there's an option we can slow it up. Jay and I kind of discussed right now, there's not an account number in that new accounting system, um, for the highways portion of this. So, um, we're going to mark all those down and kind of have a discussion at some time how we want to.
Then they have to create an account for that in our highway system to, for workman's comp. I'm working on this, I'm thinking it, on paper. Transfers and get such a regional inspection and capital outlay and the, this is a really inspection travel uh, to your EMO for five thousand dollars for final payment on QY ticket.
She's going to take thirty thousand out of her capital outlay and two thousand one eighty-one seven, oh, two thousand out of, sorry, that's what her balance was. So she's going to take ten million, that's not that, that's five thousand, and take two thousand out of her travel to, um, make, uh, be able to be able to make that payment, then she's transferred it into her EMO.
Financial equipment coming agreement for check encoder for, I'll have to tell you.
This is for her check encoder, it's just a, um, kind of like a maintenance agreement on it, um, for Valerie. It's not really a place to sign, I just set that on the front there, will sign it, and then we'll get sent back to her here, but I'm.
I move to check the second over. AEC capital credits for Alhaf County Hospital and Alhaf County Courthouse and the distribution of the funds.
Um, two checks. The very first one is a very small amount, it's fifteen dollars and ninety-nine cents, and it is made out to Alhaf County Hospital, which we don't have anymore. I called Betty Carroll, he suggested, he says, we either write it, because we need to close that account out anyway. And there's like four hundred and some, there was a donation, gosh, five or six years ago. Then there's been this like two hundred dollars that's been in there for quite a while. I just asked him, you know, "How can we handle this?" He said, "We can deposit it into that account and then put a PO on and, and give it to the clinic for upkeep." He said it can go to our EMS, if we don't know anything that is kind of related to that health.
Help them well-being clauses or sales tax.
So you guys tell me what to do with that one.
How about fire?
Fire, we could get it to fire department, that part of it too, whatever.
Yeah, just, but you guys tell me, it was just on.
I, I, I would move that we get it to the fire department.
To the one.
There you go.
On the, and this is the thirteen dollars plus the balance.
Plus the balance, correct.
To the nine fire departments.
Nine fire departments, yeah.
Okay, and I think we can just do those as transfers, um, like this, because this is a cash account, so we won't actually have to write out warrants. We'll just write out a transfer on it, then I'll have that on next month's, or next, yeah, next month's meeting. We're going to take a break.
County clerk to go out.
Oh, wait, you got that check. And then there's a large check.
Oh, yeah.
Four thousand three eighty-nine fourteen. This is made out to Alhaf County Courthouse. I called AEC, it's, everybody's combined, I mean, it's Fairgrounds, it's the district barns, any, and it's the courthouse. She couldn't tell me amounts that was on each, and I just talked to Gina Wall and I didn't talk to anyone else. But she couldn't tell me individual amounts of who gets what. I asked Betty Carroll on that one, he said, again, divide it up, put it into the individual accounts.
Is that their yearly thing that they?
This is to, no, 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 this is to close out the old capital credits.
We can do that. I, I would so move to give that to fire department.
Now, on this one, we have the actual check. You want me to just have Valerie just apportionate to the individual fire departments or do? You want me to apportionate to something and then write the, the checks out to them?
I would get a portion of them, like the sales tax is a portion too.
So what's twelve and four thousand?
Four thousand three eighty-nine fourteen.
And what was the other one?
Um, thirteen dollars and ninety-nine cents, and then the balance is like four hundred and some. So do I have a, who made the motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in.
So we keep the motion and that is decided.
Yeah, yeah, I'll just, I'll just, that's one thing.
County clerk to go out on the bid to reface the front of the exhibit building in Fair Ground for Alhaf County.
Um. Somehow we're going to have to add on here, they want those same lights, excuse me, that are, this, what they're going to do is make the old exhibit building, the face of it look like the new building. The sides are not doing anything to it, but just the face of it, so, and they're going to, so they're going to repaint that, that same color tin. And then how it has those lights underneath, they're going to, they're going to put that on in on there with lights underneath of it. And they want the same lights as what's in there. Again, that's name brand. I suggested we, and they didn't have a, a number of lights on there, so I did call and they want seven lights. And I'm going to, if it's okay with you guys, put, um, see attached spec, or equivalent.
Yeah, if they can spec them out and what they want, then that's what we'll have to show that.
Well, we can't have name brands on there unless we have or equivalent on there, so they did not have that wrote out there. So is that okay if we add that, seven lights, the attached spec, which is this, I'll, I'll throw all this, you guys should away. Or equivalent on there.
Yeah, or equivalent, yeah, that way you don't give a singer name or something to on the line. And either brand and the same wanted and the same Diane and match.
Okay. You guys can sign somewhere on that, put those specs somewhere. That's the only thing that I seen on there that was any kind of name brand. Um, I don't know if that first page of specs is on that.
Eddie Boyer on here?
Yeah, I just signed on those three lines and she was in right there. I just signed where it says the name of the firm and I just, I keep that in the bid packet.
I move to go out on the. Second, on paper.
Aye, now you can.
Okay.